This is Mayor of the Council, Councilman Meade. November 10th at City Hall is six o'clock. And, uh, Mr. Mayhorn, you'll just work there.
Father God, to thank you for the many blessings you give us in our lives. We thank you for the wonderful city and place we have chosen to live. It is full of wonderful people and it's honored to be part of that. And that's by your guidance over your children. Also let us, as city peoples, that our better angels guide our decisions and lead us forward into a great future. I know that you have a plan for us. So in your name, your son, Jesus.
We have a proclamation celebrating the 115th year of the Women's Civic Club.
Walden's?
Walden. What did I say? This organization was founded in 1910, continuing service through 2025. Whereas the Women's Women's Civic Club of Jasper was established in 1910, stands as one of the most enduring women's organizations in the state of Texas. Devoted to civic improvements, education, and community services for 115 years. Whereas since the founding, the club has been a guiding force to Jasper's growth and character. Organizing projects that enrich the culture, educational, and social well-being of its citizens. From beautification and library endeavors to scholarships, local aid, and community celebrations. And whereas the Women's Civic Club of Jasper has long held the ideas of the General Federation of Women's Clubs in GFWC Texas. Advancing programs that promote fine arts and preserve heritage, support, and education, and to strengthen community partnerships. And whereas the members of the distinguished club, past and present, have given generously their time, talent, and spirit, embodying the highest traditions of civic leadership and hospitality, and leaving a legacy that continues to inspire new generations. And whereas the 115th anniversary in the year 2025 provides the opportunity to honor this rich legacy of service and celebration, the enduring bond between the Women's Civic Club and of Jasper and the community has so faithfully served. Now, wherefore I, Clark McLean, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim the year 2025 as the 115th year of the Civic Women's Club of Jasper. Encouraging all citizens to join in impress expressing attitude and recognition for this sustained organization's 115th year of vision, volunteerism, and the dedication to the city of Jasper and Jasper County, Texas. Witness therefore, I have unto set my hand and have used the official seal of the city of Jasper to be affixed this 10th day of November, 2025. Is there anyone here to accept it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Here's why.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay, add them on agenda.
Departmental report.
Oh, departmental report, okay.
Mayor and Council, you know, last month y'all voted to have the directors and the chiefs come up. So they're out here tonight. And they would like to start giving their report tonight. I'm going to ask Bob to come up first and get us started. And each one of y'all come after.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've been giving the report on the public works department. We're going to start off with water production. Uh, we pumped and treated a total of 40,000, I'm sorry, 40 million 489,000 gallons of water. Uh, this department also does routine samples. We've done 20 back-to-back samples, uh, this month. Uh, the water distribution department, we have contractors laying a water line out 63 West. They've installed a total of 7,500 feet of line so far, with quite a few fire hydrants and everything. A lot of that line is charged and connected to residents out there now. So it should be, a lot of it is in service. This department repaired 25 water leaks, installed 26 water meters, done two water taps. And they also laid 300-foot of water main and installed a hydrant over at the doctor's office on Margaret Hancock Drive. The sewer collection department, uh, done a total of 16 sewer calls, uh, one sewer tap. They also, uh, we do maintenance on the sewer line. We do cameraing, uh, they camera the line, look for bad spots in the line. Uh, they also do like street drainage. We camered over 300 feet of street drainage and looking for problems and deficiencies in that. Waste water treatment plant, uh, we treated in, uh, a total of 20 million 943,000 gallons of water in the treatment plant. Street and drainage. They used a total of 20 tons to repair pothole. They reclaimed asphalt, uh, they used 45 tons to the recycler. We got a new paint machine. We've been painting some parking lots up at the parks and crosswalks. They used 27 and a half gallons of white paint and three gallons of wood paint to paint some of those parking lots at Sandy Creek. Uh, they sloped mode over five miles of street right away. And also three miles, uh, uh, they swept over three miles of road with this switcher. And there's a lot of the maintenance and stuff they do, that's the high points of those. Y'all got any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
You, the sweeper. What street? Can you tell me the last street that you was on?
I cannot.
You cannot?
I can find that.
Do you have it? Yeah. Because I've never seen a street, the sweeper go this year down Moreau de King. That's why I was asking.
Okay.
I just asked.
I can check and see.
Can you check it for me?
I sure can.
Okay, thank you.
I start on Vernon, does that?
It's always on Vernon. When I ask you, that's what I'm saying. I just ask, does it come down on Moreau de King? Does it come down to the street?
It shouldn't.
It doesn't come, because?
It shouldn't ever come down anything with the street with the curb and gutter.
And they have a certain route they don't run on. They run that same route every time. They get all the curb and gutter streets.
But I would check and see when the last time anyone came was done.
Okay. What about Fletcher?
I would check on that.
Okay, that's one. I'm just checking on my.
Mr. Gary, those water meter installs that you refer, is this on?
Yeah.
Are those, were those replacements, new meters, like new customers, or?
So on this upgrade that we're doing with electrical meters, we're also going to replace the water meters. So we're, we're doing that. So, and a lot of these, if we have an issue with the meter, they put a work order in and go change that meter.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, we, we, we got a lot of meters in that we're replacing.
I got you. Thank you.
Recently went out and visited with you at the water department. I'd like to say that y'all's testing program, the plan, really looks good. Sounds like we've got water for a long time. A lot of cities are struggling with that. And also the solid waste. I was very impressed with y'all's solid waste department. For those of you who don't know, state of the art. Uh, there's bigger cities that wish that they had what you got. Thank you and keep it to good work. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Father.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I give a report for the electric department and the roadway department. So the electric department made a, had a, worked 119 work orders. They, uh, went to 40 power outages over the month. They, uh, only had one new service hooked up. We've also had four disconnects for stuff that gets repaired now. Had a few upgrades, worked on several street lights and security lights. So the, uh, roadway department, they actually trimmed out 205 feet of service wire going to houses. They changed, uh, trimmed out 1,870 feet of primary line. And then, uh, they, they also work on like road clearance where they're there. You know, trimming the line out, they'll work on the road too, a little bit while they're there. They cut three trees. And I think they ran the mulching, which is down low. They use a mulcher on it under the right ways, about the same amount of feed as the primary trench. Y'all have any questions?
Community Council, I give a roadway report for the month of October. Uh, we did, we run three trucks daily. We run 18 to 20 tons each load and two a day. And for the whole month, we ran 50 loads. And that's like a thousand tons. And do y'all have any question?
Yeah, where are we taking our solid waste now?
We take it to New County and we take it to Pope County. Lake.
And, um, not having any issues with them filling up?
No.
Having a solid waste is kind of a hard subject.
As the, continue the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, for the co-enforcement department, uh, we had a total of 13 commercial permits issued this month. Total of 34 residential permits issued this month. On the code enforcement side of it, we had, uh, six jump cars removed, 30 vegetation and debris baited. Buildings removed so far, five. Legal sign pickup, 25. We investigated 10 complaints. The dilapidated buildings that we removed, like I said, is five. Uh, we also have just completed posting, tagging, and identifying 28 planted dilapidated mobile homes, which we are in the process of moving forward with, uh, either working with the owner. I, I would say approximately about seven or eight have already contacted us with plans or pulled permits to do it themselves. So we're working on the rest. And as soon as we finish up that process, we'll be coming back to the council to budge on that so that we can get approval to move forward with baiting on ourselves. I'd also like to bring up that we had two commercial CEOs issued this month as well. So we had a couple of businesses opening up. You got one that was, uh, well, this one was actually after the last council meeting, but I thought to include it. You got Sorella Aesthetics at 120 East Lamar. And you had, uh, the Texas Workforce Solution moved into building number two over there at the Southeast Texas Food Bank. We just recently got our email in from Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission for the renaming of Graham to Lewis Street. Uh, the signs, I believe, already up. But we got confirmation from 911 that that information is done and being sent out to everyone at Google Maps, county, and everyone that needs to know. It'll should be, she said give it up 30 days and it should be on all your maps. Uh, I did also receive a, uh, email from the Texas Demographic Center that gives us our population estimates as of January 1st, 2025. And we had about, to their calculations, a growth of 737 within our city. And, uh, let me get to that page. The total right now is at, uh, 7,703. Are there any questions?
I'd like to thank you for working on getting so many dilapidated, unsafe buildings. Issues under control. They can hurt people if they're not careful with those.
Do you remember, we have any problem with people moving into dilapidated structures and starting fires or anything like that?
Well, I mean, there, there's always a problem with, um, vagrants. Uh, and, and the purpose of the ordinance is to keep, you know, uh, you don't want to invite that type of vandalism into the house by being unsecured. So we try to secure every building that we can. But, you know, you can do everything you can. And if somebody wants to get in there, they're going to get in there. And luckily so far this year, we haven't had any accidents or incidents that involved a fire with someone. Is that correct, Ray? Now, a couple of years ago, we did, but so far we haven't.
I think it's great. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's great that you mentioned that there were two new businesses, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That you, that is wonderful. I think that's great that you included that in our, in your report so that the citizens and the council knows that we have new business that's, that's coming here too. It isn't just the things and the people who aren't following the code and all of this, that you're, you're giving a report about something positive in our community. So I really appreciate that, Mr. Chestnut.
Good evening, I'm Lindsay with the library. Um, we do have some stats to report, but mostly the library handles that human factor of the city. So a lot of what we do doesn't always come in number of factors. Uh, the one thing I would like to start out with is to say that we did, uh, receive accreditation for the state fiscal year of 2026, which means that we met the requirements of the state to be a qualified member of the Texas library system. As far as October, um, our patronage continues to grow. This month, we added 22 new patrons. Uh, that was, that means 20 new people came into the library, signed up for a library card, which is always exciting to see. Um, our circulation numbers continue to remain steady. Uh, we circulated, checked out 1,151 items this month. That includes physical books, ebooks, audiovisual materials. The part of the library that doesn't really come in number of factors is the outreach that we do. There's a lot of avenues that we're trying to study to see what engages the community. So, uh, we've been really drilling in, hitting hard on community outreach. We attended the Halloween on the Square event, uh, where we distributed candy, program flat calendars, and bookmarks to promote the, uh, library events and programs. We have future community outreach events scheduled, such as a booth at Christmas in the park on November 29th. And on December 2nd, we'll have a table at the Reading Under the Sea event hosted by the Jasper Junior High School. We've also developed a digital packet of our monthly program flyers, which we email to local school campuses and to KJAS. All of this has really helped promote our program and our events. This month, we held 11 program events. Total attendance of all the programs combined was 133 individuals watching to the library to attend some sort of an event this month. Our top performing programs have been our homeschool hour, storytime, and our book club. This month, we had local author Kate Boudreaux attend our book club, where she was able to talk to us about her writing process and upcoming projects, which was really fascinating. As a reader, you only know that side of the novel, what it's like for you. So getting, getting to hear the other side of that, what it was like to create that piece of work was, um, very exciting for our patrons. And they advocate that we do that more often. The other exciting, um, program, I would have to say, would be our Halloween Bingo Bash. We had 38 adults dress up in costume and attend our Bingo Bash at the VFW Hall. We were very receptive to comments. Um, a lot of our patrons liked the fact that we were creating opportunities for them to get out of the house and to socialize. So we're really honing in on that and seeing, uh, what other programs that we can develop for them to get out and mingle with each other. We are in the planning process of creating new programs for the new year. And we'll have more to report on that in the next few weeks. So that's it for the library. If you have any questions.
Actually, I do. Can you tell me how often you guys purchase books?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so I put us on a budget. So, uh, we purchase once a month, uh, sometimes depending on book releases. Uh, normally waiting toward the end of the month is helpful. Uh, there's a lot of time that we'll purchase books and then we have to wait a month before we get them. So I try to line that up where, when they're released, we can order them. That way we can get them in at the same time rather than having to wait on them.
Do you still have the, um, computer lab for people who are not connected, where they can come in and apply for jobs?
Yes, um, in fact, we had our computer basics program. Um, in fact, today we had two register that attended for that, teaching them the basics on computers. But we had, I believe, 179 visits to our lab this month. So yes, sir, people are consistently coming in to use our computer lab for jobs or impact Texas drivers, um, courses, multiple, multitude of things. So yes, sir.
Great, the way you added to this, books. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Jessica with the United School Court. For October, we had 93 new violations. Um, we had, we completed 84 cases during the month. 72 of those defendants paid their fines in full. 12 of them appeared before the judge. Three were dismissed for defense of driving. One was dismissed for deferred. And four were compliance dismissals if they had insurance or if they got their registration on time. And then three were dismissed by the prosecutor due to being deceased. We had 47, um, arrest warrants issued for the month. 35 of those were traffic. 11 were state law and one was city ordinance. We had 42 warrants that were cleared, means they were paid in full. Um, 33 of those were traffic. Eight of those were state law and one city ordinance. Our total fines and fees collected was $21,647.66.
I can ask a question real quick. Um, there are some attorneys who work with you guys to try to recover some of the, the fines. How is that going? Is that still very successful?
We have, it's not been installed yet. We just contacted ENCODE, which is our system that we use. Um, I did do a poll that we done last week. They say, hopefully within the next 30 days, that will be installed on our computers for the collection module. And then from that, it should be around the end of the year. So we're looking at the end of the year, hopefully first of 26. But all that's going great.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Terry Patrick. I'm the, uh, captain for the police department chief officer out of town. They take us out, I'll be standing for tonight. For the month of October, we had a total of 701 call for service. Our officers took a total of 80, um, reports. We had a total of 53 arrests for the month. We had 290 traffic stops. Where 222 were issued warnings and 68 were issued citations. We had 11 traffic crashes in the city limits. And our investigators and our CID division were assigned 53 cases and cleared 25 of those. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. Oh, the department is, Mr. Brandon. Brandon.
Get it soon. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to give the, uh, monthly report for the fire department. As we all know, may not know, but October is the fire prevention month. Has the first full week in October is the fire prevention week. So in the month of October, we answered 45 calls. We pumped 10,325 gallons of water. Uh, so of those calls, one was a structure fire, one was a vehicle fire, one was a mutual aid provided, 11 woods, grass, Russian tree fires, two accidents, one motor home RV fire, one appliance fire, one equipment fire, one electrical fire, four false alarms, one hazmat, 10 unauthorized burns, and other service calls were 10 as well. Other service calls might be a landowner line, tree in the road, things of that nature. So of the, um, five events that we held for fire prevention, we ran 770 kids through our fire prevention truck.
700?
770 kids.
What's an example of an unauthorized burn?
Unauthorized burns, burn brand violation or ordinance violation.
And it was lifted, lifted, but it's reinstated now.
It's reinstated today about 11:30 as well.
That's very important for our citizens to know.
Correct.
I'd like to thank the fire department, firemen, and the police department. I will go to sleep tonight and rest well. And you guys will have a scanner by your bed. And I appreciate those people that will do that. And, uh, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any more questions?
Thank you.
That wraps up the department reports. Anybody sign off for public, no public comments. All right, and we're going to move, have on the agendas, number, number nine up to number one. Let me shut up and get out of here and move to your.
Okay, before they leave, Ms. Madison. Uh, I forgot what street it's on, but I had request that there will, there be a speed limit sign. Who's in charge of that? Which one, if anybody was just in charge of the stop sign, the speed limit?
Police department actually approved it and public works puts it in place.
Okay, well, they did put one on the street that I request. Appreciate it because the, the people there that call me are very glad that y'all did that. They called me and said, we want to thank you and to thank you all for putting it, putting it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The infomay, uh, the change at the school with the stop signs. I'll be less likely to run over somebody now. For those who aren't aware of it, Parnell, or over. By the junior high, there was a really confusing street there and those stop signs seemed to clear that up. So thank you for.
That whole intersection is confused.
It is, it's just a mess.
Called common sense.
Wow, wouldn't that be nice?
Go ahead, Mr. Chestnut.
Mayor and Council. So the, uh, the variance that you have in front of you is from the Jasper Hospital District for the Morrell Building. No, I'm sorry, it's for the Charleston Building. It's going to go right beside the Morrell Building, one that's currently under construction. So, uh, when they had their plans designed, uh, they had put in some, tried to space their buildings so they can maximize that lot spacing, put as many clinics as they possibly could in there. And when they did that, the planning designer created a fire-rated construction on the exterior wall due to the separation distance. Come to find out that they have a delay in those windows on that wall. So in order to expedite construction so that they can move forward with completing the Morrell, and also starting Charleston, they're requesting to encroach on their, um, rear setback by 10 feet, which they established because it's a commercial development. So when they had their plat approved, they established 30-foot easement all the way around that property. So since they created that easement and it's above the minimum standards, they're asking to encroach back on top of that because it's already been recorded as such. So 10 foot is going to allow them the separation distance between those buildings to not have to wait to order those windows and move that construction forward. Uh, Fire Chief and I both reviewed those plans and we both recommended the variance be approved. Any questions?
Make a motion to him further.
Certainly.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passed. Back on the agendas, just on work, could share for approval? Back on the agendas, get non-words considered for approval. We have got four considerations there. We're going to lump them all into one, if they're okay with that one. With approval for two sets of minutes, the regular call meeting on October fourteenth and the special call city council made on October twenty-first. Consider for approval the twenty, twenty-five tax road resolution. Consider for approval agreement and resolutions for the temporary closure of the state right-of-way for the Christmas parade and rodeo parade. And consider for approval the signing of the fair housing monthly proclamation affirming the city's commitment to fair housing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion down a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Four zero. All items for discussion in our actions. Consider for approval authorizing procurement process for a grant administrator and appointing a rating committee for the CDVG DR grant through Texas General Land Office.
I move we approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
That's gonna be for A and B, right?
Do we need to go A and B together?
Yes.
Okay, and B on that is authorizing procurement process for an engineer and appointing a rating committee for the CB, CDVG GR grant through the Texas Land Office. We're gonna do those together?
I have a question. Usually Susan is here, but not with this.
This is, this is, Mayor and Council, this is to get a grant administrator, which Susan is. We gotta go out for our proposals for that and we also have to do it for engineer.
So that's what you're asking, is approval for a grant administrator like what Susan Stover usually does for the city of Jasper and also for an engineer?
Yes, and to, one council member to go along with Liz, Bob and myself as the rating committee for that.
For what project?
That hadn't been decided yet. We gotta get this done first.
What is the engineer, what is his duty gonna be?
To draw the plans for every project we come up with.
This is simply to have those folks in place to service our needs for future projects.
Like I said, December, January, when they authorize for us to go out, they'll deal us the list of different things that the grants available for and then we'll be ready for that. We're just getting a little bit ahead of the game. You wanna hear a motion? All right, before you can, one of y'all wanna make the motion to put which council member y'all might want to on the rating committee?
I think it was. I'd be happy to volunteer.
Will we make a motion or just volunteer?
I will make the motion to cover all three of those.
And we have a second over here.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Consider for approval, purchase a new tractor to replace a John Deere tractor that lost to a fire.
Well, back in July, we lost the John Deere tractor, two thousand and eight model, to a fire. So we've been looking at purchasing something else, working with the insurance company. So we went out and done some investigating on some different types of equipment and we found this Mantis mower. The Mantis mower is a larger unit. It's built just for this, for the mowing and it's not an add-on to a John Deere tractor like we have initially. So we think this is more feasible, safer. It's got more attachments to it. It's got more reach, just more compatible and everything to, you know, the mowing and keeping the right-of-ways and street drainage and stuff clean. So Jasper County actually has six of these units they've bought in the last year. We went out and visited with commissioners, looked at it, actually seen it in, in operating on the street in the county. And we think this is a feasible purchase for our needs, is safer and more efficient. It's a little bit more expensive than just a regular John Deere tractor, but we think it'll last longer. And just, you know, help the departments keep the roads up and right-of-ways a lot better.
It's something we can use in multiple departments also. Use that for the drainage of streets and right-of-way on the, keeping fire lines back on.
How much of the replacement cost is insurance covering?
So the insurance is gonna cover seventy-seven thousand, two hundred dollars.
And I have a question. Mr. Lee, will this help with some of the outages that we experienced that you would be able to cut more from these lines, correct?
Well, actually, it's not gonna reach up as high as our, like our distribution line because they're at like, you know, forty-five and fifty-foot in the air. This is only gonna reach around thirty foot. We have another machine that we use to, you know, trim up that high around the limbs and stuff like that for closer to the power line.
So this isn't gonna affect that department at all?
Yes, yes, it will, because we can actually get to places down lower that we can't reach with anything. Because we have to reach across a ditch now that we can't get anything else over there to mow it.
Yes, because a lot of the times the outages that people experience is from the limbs touching the line. So you're saying this machine right here is gonna help you?
Definitely.
So how many do you have? That's the only one we have?
We have two John Deere Sidewalk mowers, one burnt in July. We still have another one, but the only, the reach on that one was eighteen feet. So this will allow us a lot more reach and it's got more attachments. The John Deere mower only has one attachment that goes along with it. This has multiple attachments and stuff that we can add to it to help clear the right-of-ways and streets and drainage.
And this is a machine the county has that we, is something that we can swap out with them possibly if needed?
Yes, if they would allow that, but yeah. Man, they have six of these units that are in service at this time. And all the precincts has at least one.
And all implements interchange?
Yeah, the implements is equipped and eight with a high-flow hydraulic system that we interchange. And they have more attachments that fit on the front of this. You got sweepers, you got blowers, you got stuff that we can utilize. In the future, we can buy more attachments for it in the future if they come available.
It looks like under storm conditions, it'd be quite helpful with that mowsing part. After hurricanes, some of that also.
So a John Deere tractor, the cab's fixed on it. So the operator has to actually physically turn and reach over into, this cab actually, the whole cab turns at one-hundred-and-eighty degrees. So they can, got more visibility, it's a lot bigger cab. The tires spider over, so instead of having backup and turning, they can just turn the wheels and spider over to get closer to a ditch or far away from a ditch.
And you feel this is gonna help provide better service to, to our citizens, to our customers? Yes, because it is quite a jump, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents, correct? That's quite a jump from, from the original tractor.
Yes, but all equipment's gone up in the last few years, so, you know, it's just, it's a matter of time where everything's going up. So we have Mr. Underwood here, he's the representative for Mantis. If you have any questions for him, he'd be happy to answer those.
Does it come with any kind of warranty?
Yes, it does have a warranty. We're looking into extending warranty and getting a price on that also.
Since you've had six of them operating in the county, have there been any issues?
There has been, they've, some smaller issues, they have worked on those and got those resolved. And I did talk to two commissioners and they said that they were resolved, so.
They're pleased with their improvement?
They are, they just received one, remember was that, Mr. Underwood, last week? Yeah, Thursday, we went out and looked at it, they just received another one.
Are these, are these American-made?
Yes, they are.
Parts ready, available, easy to get?
Plant's in Seguin, Seguin, Texas. The, the actual tractors assembled in Iowa and it's brought to Seguin and all the mowers and the implements are there. So you're four and a half hour drive and something really got bad, you could get, we even had to get it shipped.
We're lucky if that plant moved to death.
Well, me too, because I'd probably be the one that has to go get the part, but anyway.
I would also like to mention, Mr. Kelly, the amount is coming from SRMPA for this, correct?
Correct. This electric one, what you're using electric?
Yes, so, and so we need to keep that in mind as well, my fellow council members, that once that money from SRMPA is spent, it's spent. And this is where they're recommending that we take this money from four hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents from SRMPA funds.
Actually, it's not principal, it's interest off some of that money.
It'd be less than seventy-seven thousand, so we'll get insurance money of that and be, you know.
Yeah, so seventy-seven thousand was the insurance money. And to replace the tractor that you had, how much would that cost, a hundred and fifty thousand?
It's over two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, and instead we're asking for a request for four hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and, and fifty-eight cents, right? That's, that's an enormous amount, an increase.
But with the, with the old tractor, if it gets one implement?
Yes.
If you break down the implements, it just goes with the tractor and mower?
We can, we can cut them and save money, yes.
But you get a lot more use out of them.
Yeah, so this actually has a saw head, it's got three blades on it, so you can reach out and cut brush sticking out, clean cuts instead of with the, the bush hog model. I mean, you know, we're gonna use implements different places to utilize different things.
I mean, I want you guys to have everything that you need to be able to do the job and, and absolutely the best job that you can for the citizens. It's just an enormous jump, enormous.
It is, but we feel like that this equipment, you know, it's gonna last a lot longer than the, the older equipment that we've had. So the purchase is higher, but it's gonna be, hopefully, we're planning on it lasting a lot longer because it's built just for this.
The thing about the John Deere tractor, if you put them on, is this not designed, that Sidewalk and Bush Hog is a retro fit for that tractor and it's in a, it's always got it always leaned over, that's why we don't have so much problem with the tractors breaking down. The tractor was never designed for that anyway, it was designed for an implement.
I went out to the county barn to look at the equipment. It's an impressive piece of equipment. But something I noticed, this over to the side was a John Deere tractor with a wheel off of it that was previously a boom mower. Basically, what you're talking about, it broke itself because it wasn't built for that job. So they got a pile of junk out there that they're having to replace because they were cheap.
All right, my question is, can we afford that? That's all I'm asking.
Yes.
That's all I'm asking, can Jasper, Texas afford that?
Well, the, the money is gonna come from SRMPA, so the money that we use to give citizens a rebate back on their electric bill. And we always discuss that, that once that money is gone, that money is gone. That is where this money is coming from, from SRMPA.
Well, I think we'll table this, though.
You make the motion to table?
I'd like to make the motion to hold on it.
We got to finish up. She's made a motion to table.
Have you? Have you?
I'll second. I need to make a motion that we table this.
I, I think we need to research this some more, this is an enormous amount of money, this amount of money.
And we did promise the citizens of Jasper about their lives. Now we did that. Is that where the money's gonna come from?
It's coming from the interest of the dollars that are being held in reserves. And we, we took, we approved a huge chunk a few months back to come out of reserves. But the interest is, it will come back. The reserves will never come back.
Yes, that's, that's, that's correct. We approved a, a huge chunk to do that. But every time that we spend this money, we always discuss that, that we're not gonna get any more money. This is, this is how much money we're gonna have. I understand the interest, but, but once the money's gone, the money's gone. And so we talk about storms and things like that of that nature happening, this, this is spending some of that money. So I just wanna be sure that, that we need to do this right now for that amount. That's an enormous amount. I mean, seventy-seven thousand, you said, is how much the insurance paid?
Yes.
Yes, and four hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars is, is the part of money. I'd like to research it, I'll, I'll second the motion to table.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table. Is any discussion on it? All in favor of table? opposed? Two, all opposed?
Aye.
We have a tie. Voting no.
Voting no what?
Uh, to not table.
Okay, okay, so it did not get tabled. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to purchase the new tractor.
We got a motion and a second to approve item seven-six for the purchase of the new tractor to replace the John Deere tractor. Any discussion?
I am also cautious of city money. I think when I first looked at it, I was a little bit shocked at the sticker price also. I didn't understand your concern. After seeing the equipment and seeing what it can do and getting testimonials from the commissioners, I think it is a good investment.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose?
Oppose, no.
Okay, we have a tie. I'll vote for the approval to buy the new tractor. That puts us down to item number seven. Consider for approval and amend and update ordinance chapter two, administrative article four, records management program. Fred, can you explain that for us, please?
Mayor and Council, this is update and we got it in from the state about the records management. Some stuff changed on state laws and stuff, and so this is updating our ordinance.
Does that put us in compliance with state?
Yes.
I move we approve this.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, any questions? All in favor for approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Consider for approval resolution authorizing submission of grant applications to the Public Safety Office.
Mayor and Council, a few months back, the state opened up a grant for police departments to apply for a no-match grant for ballistic windows for our officers for the units. It also comes with ballistic door panels that go inside the actual doors itself. So we just need a approval of the resolution, which pretty much authorizes Chief Officer to, to apply for the grant. And also this documents that if any funds are not used for the glass or if they give us more money than what's needed, the funds will be returned back to the state.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir, we pass. I have number ten. Consider for approval official ballot votes for the twenty-six, twenty-seven term candidates for board membership for Jasper appraisal. This, Jasper County appraisal.
I'd like to make a motion, um, it's my understanding that, uh, Mr. Holmes has withdrawn and in light of that, I would like to make a motion to cast our votes for Dean Miller.
I second.
Move a motion and a second, any discussion?
Sorry about that, Doc.
Any further discussion, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, unanimous? And that leaves us down to number ten, council time, discussion.
I have no.
I've, I've got one other thing, we got a, we got a thank you this week from, what, what was that person?
I fourteen.
I fourteen coalition that is coming through Jasper and it is already work being done on it out in West Texas and stuff. And I fourteen folks is headed our way. We need to start doing everything we can to get better than that. I won't be here. I'm sure it's years and years out, but Jasper's right in the bullseye. So everybody think about it and, and we need to get better for that in the years to come.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to thank the Women's Civic Club for all the work they've done in Jasper. Uh, for those who are not familiar with the program, they started back when women's suffrage was a thing and they thought, get women to vote, so we know how that worked out. They also started the first public library in Jasper through their own funds. They also pushed for prohibition, but I don't know if it's perfect, so I guess we can give them all that. Uh, but what they've done, the whole, what they've done for me lately is they are helping our animal patrol, uh, dog, now they tend not to use that term, build a dog park so that our rescue animals out there can have a better life and they're funding that through their, uh, their civic work. So if you see them, thank them, please. Also, uh, they always like to give us the free dog food, if anybody wants to take some dog food out there, appreciate it. Otherwise, folks, Jasper's a great place to live, great people. Come see us for one day, come see us for a weekend, come build a life here, great people, great community, we love you, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, just real quick, I've had a lot of questions about our economic development and especially questions about the sports complex or the possibility of a sports complex with JEDCO. I would encourage all of our citizens to please watch the videos that are online of our economic development meetings. If you have any questions, I'm sure the board members at JEDCO would be happy to answer them for you and the council members as well. Um, from what I understand, just to answer the questions that I've received, uh, they do not anticipate, uh, this sports complex going forward. That's not me saying that, that's from my understanding. Um, and so if you have any questions about this or, or the vote that was made in two thousand nine or any of the questions about who will be able to play at this new sports complex because I think there's a lot of confusion that surrounds it and I've received a lot of calls and from what I understand, this is for a travel ball. This is not like the baseball park where all kids can go and play there. They would have to pay to play at this new complex if this was made into a reality. So that's just my understanding, just basic knowledge that I have about it. But any questions or concerns about anything that's happening at JEDCO, I would like to encourage all citizens, please go to the meetings, please speak during public comment, please call your council member and also these board members. The council members work for you, all JEDCO board members work for you as well. The city of Jasper belongs to the citizens.
Well, I'd like to make one comment on, on the sports facility. Uh, last week, we were in a three-day session up in Fort Worth and one of the programs was sports facilities. And it was a, a town called Portland, down Corpus Christi, small community. They said that Corpus Christi is full of industry, but inside this city limits, they had no tax base for industry. And they built their sports complex and it said, it, they told us it saved their city. That, and, and it has to have the right management, it has to be a management group and it has to be done right. But they are pulling in from thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred people just about every weekend. Sports is no longer a summer or, or ball. These people play these traveling teams and they go, my nephew is in Dallas this weekend playing ball. But to bring eight, eight, two thousand people in here on a weekend that doesn't live here, then they've got to put heads and beds, they've got the fuel, they've got to buy chips and drinks and ice and spend money in our city. Um, I don't know very much about the sports complex, but I do know that if it's done right, it can be an economic benefit. If it's done right, if you can afford to have it built. So, just like she said, let's, somebody needs to dig deep and research it and see if it is viable thing for our town.
Absolutely, and if this is what the citizens want, absolutely.
So, any other discussion? Got a here motion, adjourned? Motion, ten minutes, a second?